Thank you. I'm going to welcome everybody. This is our City of St. Helena Special City Council Meeting, Tuesday, January 26. And Cindy, we spoke earlier, did you want me to defer to you now on the Spanish language interpretation, helping people understand how to do the remote access? Or will Priya do that part?
Priya will do that tonight. I will just be taking care of the public comment portion.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, Priya, would you get us into the remote instructions and the Spanish language interpretation information, please?
Yes, absolutely. So, this afternoon's meeting will be translated and will offer Spanish interpretation services. So, to access interpretations, what you'll need to do is download the Zoom app on your smartphone, tablet, or computer. And we have instructions on how to do that in Spanish and English on the city's agenda and on the website. So, once you download Zoom, you'll need to click on the globe, and that will allow you to access Spanish interpretation. And then, for those who are participating and would like to participate in public comment, there are a few ways to do that. So, if you're using the app, you can use the raise hand feature. It's either at the top or the bottom of your screen if you're using an iPhone or an iPad or a computer. And then, if you're just calling in, what I've done is I put instructions on how to do that. So, you'll want to dial 669-900-6833. And then, at the prompt, you will put in 831-8056-0378. And then, you'll press pound. And then, when public comment is called, you will press star nine to speak. And that's how you can participate if you're calling in. And again, if you are accessing the meeting and you would like to use our Spanish interpretation, you can use the little globe, which is at the bottom of your screen. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So, now we'll do the roll call, please.
Mayor Eldred.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring.
I'm here.
Councilor Rishitoe.
Yes.
Hall.
Here.
Lester, did you?
I'm here.
Very good. We'll move. Now, I'll make a reading here on public comment. Because this is a special meeting, under California Public Law, the comments that special meetings are limited to subjects on the agenda only. And so, therefore, public comment will take place during consideration of the item, where each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. Before we get into the item, I just want to say that at our six o'clock meeting, we'll have some updates on the COVID situation and on the weather situation. For anybody who may be watching at the six o'clock meeting, we'll have some updates on those issues. And so, we'll move now from public comment to our new business. And this is the City Council review and discussion of the St. Helena user fee report and draft user fees. And I'm going to pass this now to our city manager, Mark Presswitz, to get us into the item here.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to the workshop. And today, we're really taking an opportunity to continue to move forward on ensuring that our city finances, in particular, follow best practices. One of those best practices is to ensure that our user fees are updated, have a council look at every, approximately every five years. It's been a little bit longer than that for us. And in those intervening years, cities will typically adjust by inflation or CPI, the Consumer Price Index, their fees. But it's important to take a, to look every couple of years, every five years, as a best practice. What our focus on is wanting to make sure that we calibrate the fees to the council's policy preferences for cost recovery versus supporting of services. So, there's a balance there. And different councils may have different perspectives. And so, when we look at other cities' fees in other communities, those fees may be supported in ways that provide some form of subsidy. Other cities may have an interest in full cost recovery for most of the services they provide. That's really the focus of our conversation today. And we have a lot of material to get through. We may not get through it all. If we don't, we have other options on how we continue the conversation. I want to thank our department heads for being available today. They will be available to answer any additional questions and provide some context to the questions that you have and the feedback. Our focus really today is receiving your feedback so that we can eventually bring back a recommended document with fees that you'll take action on down the road. So, with that, let me pause there. I'm going to turn it over to Mandy Kellogg, our finance manager, who's going to provide an overview of our objectives and introduce our consultant.
Mandy, we're, I'm having trouble hearing you. Can anybody hear her? No?
I can jump in, Mandy. So, gives you the chance to call in. I'll go ahead and jump in. So, the first thing that we wanted to do tonight, again, thank you for taking the time to come do our preliminary review of these fees. The objectives for tonight is that first, we're going to have Wildin, and we have Tony Thrasher and Preetah here that will present basically the methodology behind the user fee study. So, as Mark had indicated, we've been working on this for quite some time. And there is definitely comprehensive methodology. So, Wildin is actually going to review that methodology with you. We are also presenting the draft user fee study to the city council tonight. Once that is done, after Wildin has made their presentation, what we're going to do is we're going to review the draft user fee by department. So, we just want to make sure that it's methodology, how systematically, that's a better word, systematically how we're going to go through this. And the other objective tonight is to receive feedback from the city council and any recommendations on the draft user fees. And as Mark had stated, there might be subsequent meetings if we can't get through everything tonight based on time and/or the feedback that we're going to get. So, the next thing I want to do is introduce Tony from Wildin Financial. So, he is the person that's going to be doing the review of their methodologies to determine what the full cost recovery is. So, following the presentation, again, you can ask Wildin any questions on the methodology. And then, following that staff is going to facilitate the review of the user fees. So, with that, I'm going to pass it over to Tony.
Thank you, Mandy, April, and Mark, and hello, Mayor and Council. So, I am here to give you a presentation, just kind of go over the basics of the user fee study and everything's kind of gone up until now. Let's see.
Thanks for being here, Tony. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Anything I can do to help, right, these times? And hello to everyone else on the Zoom. One sec. It's up. I'll start talking again.
So, Priya, we are ready for the PowerPoint.
There we go. All right. So, let's go ahead and go on to the next slide. And so, what are user fees, right? What we're talking about, when we're talking about user fees, are programs and services that generally provide a private benefit to individuals that are requesting the service, either directly through a service request or through their actions, say, by building permit need, right? The benefits to the community is typically limited. There are usually some crossover here and there. They think of things like parks and recs. But in general, user fees can be seen as being a private benefit service. The state law requires that the use of the services be voluntary and that the fees be reasonably based off of the cost of providing services. So, it's kind of a nebulous thing when you talk about that, but it's, it actually says must reasonably relate to the services that are being provided. So, the reasonable cost is what this study's here to determine. So, user fee study, its primary goal is to determine what the reasonable cost of services are. Each fee or service cost is determined individually. So, we look at what it takes on a one-to-one basis, as much as we can, to identify what it takes to provide that service. We use fully burned hourly rates and the time it takes for staff to provide those services. So, in those fully burned hourly rates, we're looking at the salary and benefit costs, department overhead. We layer on indirect overhead as well through the cost allocation plan. So, it's kind of thinking of the support of the central services on top of the departments as well. So, that we're representing that private benefit that goes to the user, how much cost goes into it on a hour-by-hour scale. So, up to 100% of the cost may be recovered. It is a policy decision on how much of that recovery you want to do and what level of subsidization you might want. The, so, that is what the user fee study is, in a nutshell. Now, the objectives of our user fee study, though, can be quite varied. But we want to develop a rational basis for each fee on what its cost structure is and how that service is being provided. We identify with the subsidy amounts that are currently, you know, you have currently through your current fee, and then we compare those to what you might have based off the full cost and suggested fees. And then, we identify appropriate fee changes that you might want to look at, and we have within the study itself, that would bring some measure of cost recovery for the private benefit services to alleviate some of the general fund, you know, constraints that these type of things come with. But at the same time, be fair and reasonable, right? And all the while, maintain a consistency with state law so that we're making sure that we're not including anything that has any regulations that are, like a return check fees. Those are set at $25 for the first, $35 for the second. Can't really change much on that. And then, the fee schedule that we developed is in a user fee or is in an Excel-based model. So, it's easily updatable, easily modifiable, and so that you can update your costs as you go along over the years to make sure that you're staying abreast of all those things. So, the scope of the study, though, is the departments that are included. Now, that is your general city fees, copy fees and stuff like that, planning fees, building fees, public works, think of the engineering-type stuff, parks and recreation, police and fire. Library fees were not analyzed but are included in the fee schedule, but they were not, they're not changed or anything like that. And they're, they're just included for kind of comprehensive look at all your services. Next slide, please. So, in all of that, it takes a lot of data, a lot of back and forth with staff. So, we use department budgets, salary and benefit information, all the staffing structures, and really, the cost allocation plan. But a lot of it is just back and forth with your staff, because we need to know what goes into providing those services so that we know what the costs are in there. And so, using the fully burned hourly rates that I said before to find out what the cost per hour is for staff to provide services, couple that with time estimates for a reasonable amount of time it takes to provide those services, gives us a full cost. So, all the while, city feedback on kind of the cost structures, the types of services they provide, and those processes therein are kind of pivotal. And the schedule you end up with needs to be unique to each and every city that we work with. Next slide, please. So, the data layers, we build up through that. We first start off with department interviews where we go through the services, the schedules, and determine any adjustments that might need to be, they might need to go through. We collect time estimates, and then we build up those cost layers of the labor costs and indirect overhead on top of it. And just to summarize that all into the top right, that's so that we can define the full cost of services, right? And only then, after we try to determine what the full cost of services are, do we talk about any cost recovery policy or where you might want to set suggested fees. We don't want to put the cart before the horse. So, we want to know what the costs are before we start talking about any fee suggestions. Next slide, please. So, within those fees, using the fully burned hourly rate, the bulk of it is going to be the direct labor cost. And so, that is your salaries, benefits, third-party, the consulting costs, as well as materials. Layered on top of that is going to be those overheads. And within the department overhead is, you know, pens, paper, electricity, as well as any administrative overhead within the department. And then, the cost allocation overhead, which is city manager, finance, you know, building maintenance, all those things that provide support to the departments themselves but don't have outward to the public mechanism to recovery their portion of their costs. Next slide. Keep in mind that even if a fee is within, say, planning, it doesn't mean that other departments aren't involved. And so, when you look at what the full cost is, usually involves a number of different departments and positions. And so, either directly or indirectly. So, in example, we have here, we have a lot of departments involved. Let's say the city secretary might be an indirect support through, say, an agenda item or through some reference that they might need to take through some data requests or something of the sort. So, indirectly or directly, you have departments involved with most of your services that you provide throughout the city. And so, we want to make sure that we identify what the full cost is so that you have the full knowledge on where you might want to go with cost recovery for setting suggested fees. Next slide, please. So, the suggested fees that are in the current model, and this is kind of a synopsis, right, of all the departments, the number of increases, decreases, no changes, and the new fees that are in there. So, the one note we have on here for planning is that the, some increases are in the deposit amounts, but since those are billed at the hourly rates, it may not be that it's an actual increase. It's just we're setting the deposit so it's more reasonable based off of the service being provided. Maybe it is, if you're always charging a low deposit, you're always having to go back for more. So, if you set your deposits at a reasonable level, then you can try to match that to how much cost is going to be involved. Now, when we're looking at the number of increases and decreases and all that sort of thing, in general, the city's fees are actually quite low for what we typically see across California. And we'll get into a little bit of that, and then actually, we can probably go to the next slide. Let's do that. And we're going to go through the departments themselves a little bit. Yeah. Oh, no, this is, sorry. I want to touch on the building permit fee program, because it is different, and it's a different kind of nature. So, while we could talk about other fees that go up or down, you know, this many up or down, the entire building program, building permit fee program uses valuation to determine what the cost of the permits are. So, think of it as, you know, the cost per square foot of a single-family home versus a medical facility type thing, right? The costs are different, and the amount of effort needed to do the plan check and inspection is different as well. And the higher cost that you have for construction cost is pretty closely ties to the amount of effort that might be needed or increase in effort. And so, through valuation, you can actually, you can actually kind of keep that measure with that. And so, through the use of the valuation fee program, current cost recovery is only at 35%. And so, we're suggesting that you would need an increase of 50%, would only bring you up to a cost recovery of 52.5% and would still leave your fees quite low. So, I'd say, just, and this was, I remarked before, we're kind of looking at moderate, moderate fee increases to try to help your general fund out so that you kind of alleviate some of those issues you might have, especially now with, you know, COVID going on, so that you can have more resources for, say, police-fire programs you might want to institute. So, you charge for the private benefit services. And let's go to the next slide. And there we go. So, typical cost recovery ranges. So, these are where you typically see cost recovery in cities around California. We'll move a little bit here. It looks like the lights are off on me. So, this is based off of what you typically see out there. But no city is going to perfectly match these sorts of things, because really, what dictates where you're going to go with your suggested fees is going to be where you're coming from. So, you don't want to, you know, have rate shock and increase things too much. And so, we've made sure that your fees don't have that in there. Your fee increases are reasonable. That doesn't include, you know, non-user fee costs, revenue activities. So, when we talk about an increase to, say, police, to have your, those cost recovery, those are for the private benefit-type stuff. We're not looking at total department cost recovery, because that would, that's, that would make sense. It's unreasonable. This is only for, you know, if they're doing citation write-offs and stuff like that. Now, and I'd say that when you're looking at Parks and Rec specifically, you want to look at kind of your market areas, where you are compared to your neighbors, but also be cognizant of where you might want to be at a policy level of cost recovery. Forty to 60, and that is funny. I say 40 to 60, but that can range from 20 to 80%, depending on city to city and where they are and their usage levels of their facilities, as well as the programs, because they vary wildly year to year. Let's go to the next slide. So, things to consider typically in a user fee study in setting suggested fees. You know, if I put on an economics hat, or I would say, you know, general standard is individuals that receive 100% private benefit should pay 100% of the cost so that your general fund doesn't have to make up the difference. But that's, I'd say that never really happens, right? There's always going to be some subsidy inherent within your user fees. And so, it's just kind of measuring where that you feel that that is a reasonable place to go. You might want to encourage participation through some programs with, say, Parks and Rec, ensure compliance. So, if, you know, you have a water heater permit that is cost prohibitive, then you might subsidize that to ensure that people are making, are getting that done and allow access to services. Think of youth and senior services, right? We do recommend the city include an annual inflation factor to allow for council by resolution to annually adjust fees based off CPI. So, you can keep up with costs in the off-years. You don't do studies so that you don't have to do larger increases in other years. Okay, next slide. So, from here, I'll kind of open it up to your questions and answers. The report is long, because there's a lot of fees. This is just a synopsis of those sorts of things. So, go ahead and stop talking there and open it.
Thank, thank you, Tony. Thanks for really taking us to that and giving us an overview. Are there any initial comments or questions from the council on where we are before we get into a little more in-depth on the fees? I'm looking at our council. I'm seeing Ms. Chutel.
I have a general question, because you said that we, hi, Tony. Thank you for being here. Very informative. So, thank you for that. My general question is, you said that we, our fees are actually low compared to other cities. And when I went over the numbers, I was struck by how we were higher than everybody else, it seemed like, in most areas compared to the cities specifically that were presented in our report. So, will you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, and I can help clarify that. So, when I say, and I should have said it a little differently, when I talk about the typical cost recovery, that's after a city has undergone a full study of their user fees. Most of your surrounding neighbors haven't done a lot of user fee, you know, studies. And so, they're likely sitting on fees from possibly the 90s. I still do some of those where cities haven't undergone a cost study since that long, and no one's going to call them out for it, because no one wants higher fees, right? So, the developers aren't going to tell you to raise your fees. But in general, after you undergo a cost study, that's where you're at. So, I'd say be a little careful in comparing yourselves to your neighbors if they haven't undergone this sort of thing. And also, when you're looking at other cities, you also don't know their cost structure. You don't know their subsidy levels, and you don't know everything that kind of goes into it. I think of like a planning application might include four different applications on their fee study where it might be lumped into one on yours. So, it's never apples to apples.
Yes, go ahead, Anna.
Question. So, were the cities that were in our report, did they do a recent cost, a fee increase or not? Do you know that?
I don't believe any of those have done one recently, not that I could see at the outset. No, I, there is, NAPA is undergoing one, I know, because we're doing it, but we are not even close to really starting that one.
Okay, thank you.
And thank, and Mr. Hall, did I see, Eric, did I see your hand?
I thank you. Sorry, you had mentioned at the outset that you, that we didn't look at the library, and I was just wondering what, why was that left out?
I can jump in, Dan. I can jump in to answer that question, Eric. The library right now has very limited amount of fees, and I believe it was just about a year, year and a half ago, the fees, actually several of the library fees, it was recommended that we actually remove the fees to make it more cost, not cost inhibited for people that, that might not be able to afford it. And so, because that was something that recently went to city council and was approved, that was a fee structure that we did not look at. And then, our library director is here as well that can answer any questions to why we decided to remove those fees or make the recommendation.
Okay, thank, thank you.
So, my understanding today is we're being presented with this information to consider as a council and also consider how we move forward. So, as we get into some of the more detailed areas, let's all think about how we want to look at this. One of the suggestions from the city manager is, you know, if we can work through this today, that's, that's great, but also, there may be a need or a want for a couple of council members to work with staff and the consultant to sort of synthesize this as we get it back eventually to the council to vote upon. So, I just want us to think as a council, as we move forward, how much data we're taking in and the best way to sort of take it in and, and synthesize it. So, with that, I will, Mark, are you, at this point, do we want to get into some of the details of the fees? Where are we now?
Sure. We're prepared to walk through each department, and I believe that will be our director, April Mits.
Okay. And I believe council member Hardy had his hand up. Did you have, just want to make sure that if, with Tony here, if you had any questions on the methodology?
I didn't see your hand. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no worries, Mayor. I do have a question. Thank you, Tony, for that excellent presentation. I took some notes from the slide that showed a typical high-low range for building, planning, engineering, parks and recreation, and police. And I'm wondering if you could quickly tell me where the current St. Helena fees are in terms of percentage cost recovery?
Let's say on the building front, that is around 35%. So, you're quite low on that. From a planning standpoint, you're also low on that. You're, I believe, you're below 50% cost recovery there, looking at your services. And let me grab police real quick. I believe it's on the next page here. And I should say, as I look for it myself, it is, then each fee has its own cost recovery calculated, so you can kind of see a subsidy level on there, and you have heavy subsidies within your police services as well. So, yet that one would be, I'd say, in the, in the range of, you know, around 40% cost recovery on average in there.
Thank you. Do you know engineering, Tony?
Yeah, let's see. So, for the engineering services, actually, that one's near the There we go. So, for that, you're actually a bit better on those, where you are closer to kind of the typical average. You're going to have a number of them that still have subsidies over 30%, but some of them are, you're, you're kind of closer to full cost recovery. Even more is like, you know, 70%, 70, 80. So, you're, you're a bit better within public works.
Okay.
As we, as, oh, Eric, did you have another thought, question?
I'm sorry. If it's okay, just first, let me, let me back up. So, I think I'm probably the newest guy here to, to look at this data. I think probably everybody on the council, maybe Lester, you were involved from the planning side at one point. I'm not sure. But we're probably engaged in this. So, for me, it was kind of my first time going through it. And thank you, Tony, and your, your whole team, and especially city staff. This looks like it was a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of self-analysis. How long does it take to do each of these things? So, I guess on the outside, I was just curious, do we have the same sort of data that you gathered, Tony? Do you have that from the last report that, that we worked on, whenever that was, 10, 10 years ago, five years ago? Do we have that data?
I don't have that data. We usually come in as a fresh look, especially because most staff kind of turns over at some point. I kind of leave to staff maybe to answer when the last study was and how thorough it was.
Okay.
The last study was, oh, go ahead, Mandy.
You do have that data, and that study was conducted in 2011.
And Mandy, is it your sense that our analysis this time is, is similar to what was provided last time in terms of level of effort?
Yes, we actually did a more thorough analysis this time. We did a cost allocation plan this time around, and we did not do that back in 2011.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, what we're looking at here is sort of one of these legacy issues that we're getting caught up on. If we look at, you know, the employee handbook that we got caught up on, if we look at the internal financial controls that over the last number of years, we've, we've really got caught up on, I think this is another one of those projects that we can sort of get in front of now, and then also look at how we stay on top of it as things move forward. So, we're always sort of in, in the range of where we want to be. And so, if we think about that, there's a lot of data, there's a lot of fees to look at, and then, you know, our staff, our consultant, helping us sort of synthesize what it looks like. And then, we, as a council, sort of determining policy-wise where we want to be in terms of, of how much in terms of cost. how much in terms of cost recovery, et cetera. So if we just keep that in mind as we go forward, we'll, we'll be able to, I think, get a sense of, of how we want to go. And with that, Mark or Tony, is now the time to sort of, and what I'll do is I'll, at the end of this part, I'll open it to public comment. So we'll make sure that the public has an opportunity to, to speak after we go through this material. Mark or Tony, can I hand it to you now?
I'm going to toss it to Director Mitz to walk us through department by department. And what we're looking for is your, our questions that you have, feedback that you have on fees that you see. We went line by line. It may take us several weeks to finish. So we're, we're going to organize this by department. And April, do you want to jump in at this point? And we, we have an opportunity to share the screen and I'm going to recommend that we zoom in to specific patients. It's really hard to see if you're not zoomed in. So we may want to start by zooming in on the left side and ask council members to feed, to provide feedback. But April, I'll turn it over to you for guidance.
Great, thank you. So as Mark said, we are going to go through it by department, not necessarily line item by line item. But what we are asking for feedback from city council, if there's a particular line item that's of interest to you that you want to receive more information on, such as how do we come up with the current fee? And then also if the, if the full cost amount and the suggested fee are different, that, that did take into account a lot of feedback from our various departments and representative of our departments that do work with the public and work with administering these fees. So we do have all of our departments here to be able to answer those questions as well. So we'll start out with our general city fee comparison. So this, these are things such as return check fees, copies of documents, those types of things. So what I'm going to ask is if council has any questions on any of these fees, that they can just identify the line number on the right-hand side. Then what we can do is we can zoom on that fee. If you ask your question, and then what we can do is we can provide feedback or response. And then in addition, Mandy is going to be, Mandy and myself are both going to be taking notes. So that at the end of this, we will have a summary of everything that will help us move forward and get into the next step of implementing these fees. So on that, I'd open up to council if they have any questions on general city fee comparisons.
Hey, April?
Yeah.
It's Eric. Sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Quick question. So the subsidies that we will see here, where, where did those come from? Was that prior council work or is that based on historic levels of subsidies?
The subsidy that is listed there is actually what, based off of what the recommended fees are and what the full cost is, the difference is the percentage subsidy. So that's based on the current work that we have right now.
Okay, so the subsidies that are shown here, are these representative of what's current, what we're currently doing? That's what I'm wondering? Or, or no?
No, it's, it's, no, it's representative of what the suggested fee is.
Okay, got it.
So Vice Mayor, I have, see your hands up?
Thank you. Can you describe a little bit what exactly the scope of the film permit is? Is that just the use of public properties or does this film permit also include the use of homes, for example, inside homes, inside buildings to stage, you know, ads and magazines, that kind of thing? Is, is there a distinction there and should there be a distinction?
I'm going to open that up to, I believe it would be Mandy or Maya, would you know that distinction? Oh, Cindy knows that distinction.
So I take, I take in the film permits and the $500 is for the actual processing of the film permit. If they're using city property, if they need any city personnel, then that is a separate fee. The $500 is just to process the application. And it's for all filming, all filming all over.
Okay, that didn't quite get to my question. Does it include private properties, inside and outside private properties?
Yes, it does.
I think we need to put an asterisk there because there's a fair amount of encroachment that goes on. Maybe that's a separate fee, I don't know. But when these operations come into your neighborhood to do a film inside a property, it is not a minor endeavor. It's a major endeavor and a major disruption and cars all over, moving vans everywhere. Sometimes it takes a couple of days. So I don't know what the right number is, but I just put an asterisk there that we should check into that. I think that's a good point. I, I support that. I certainly know from time spent living in other cities that perhaps had more filming, that it did, that it wasn't issue. So I would support looking into that and, and and that asterisk on that, I think is, is good. Are there any other hands from council at this point? I'm seeing, I'm having to scroll up and down on the, the right side here. So go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I also wonder, do we do a different fee for nonprofits? I know so many times that people are making films for all of our different nonprofits in town. Is it the same fee?
On this particular one, yes, it's the same fee. But they have also made requests to the city manager for a fee waiver.
So that is a, something that a nonprofit could do. It's sort of an established method is to ask for the fee waiver. Do we, is it a good, a good idea to perhaps have a written policy on that? Mark or Cindy?
I, I always prefer a written policy, which helps me follow the direction of the council. I think with respect to nonprofits, for example, banners, we typically will waive those for nonprofits. I think Vice Mayor Doring's comments about the film permit, certainly there, there are extreme differentials between use of Main Street and use of a city park. There may be an opportunity to add use of a property for some form of advertising, I think is good feedback. And, and with respect to nonprofits, it wouldn't, we couldn't either itemize that as a, can be adjusted pursuant to request of the city manager, or we can receive feedback today on the council's preferences for a potential subsidy of, of that operation, whether it's the application itself, which is often a barrier, I think would be considered a barrier for a nonprofit, that $500 is, is a significant cost to anyone that's trying to put together something modest.
And so as we, as we move forward and look at this with that asterisk on the film permit, perhaps that can also be included in what we, what we memorialize there. Anna, does that?
I would like it to, especially that first, that 500. So it's not a barrier.
And the, the code today provides the city manager with the authority to waive up to, to resolve disputes and to waive fees up to $2,000.
Any other thoughts on this section from the council? And, and, yeah, go ahead, please.
I'd like to understand a bit better, since I really have no clue what kind of activity requires a film permit?
Oftentimes, like Williams Sonoma will pull a film permit because they do go into a neighborhood and they use someone's home to decorate with their items and do a photo shoot for their magazine. We've also had Total Bellas come into town and do a shoot. And so they're just walking down the street. We've actually had some models come into our city and use some of our city locations as backgrounds for their, for their photo shoot. And Food Network has also reached out and has done some filming in St. Helena as well. Does that answer your question?
No, but I'll explain why not. People are, well, and film itself is a, is a kind of challenging term in that pretty much nobody uses film anymore. So, so we're talking about images presumably of various sorts, but people are recording images in St. Helena all the time, constantly with their phones, probably more often than with cameras. And so it's not obvious to me whether the permit is required for, simply for commercial activity, although if it's commercial and it's not clear why it would apply to nonprofits. If the permit requirement applies to commercial ventures and nonprofits, I'm thinking perhaps it doesn't apply to individuals, but I don't know how we've defined the requirement. I, I literally have no idea since I haven't researched this in the code. I'm asking the question because, you know, absent a better understanding, I'm inclined to think we may have a lot of activity that occurs that does require a permit, but for which none is requested or received. But again, I just have no idea what, what compliance would look like.
So council member Hardy, it's, the, the code is 5.24030 and there's a definition that describes filming activities, a variety of activities attendant to the making of motion pictures, television programs, commercial and non-theatrical productions and advertisements. Possibly a, a need to update the word film because you're right. Technology has evolved quite a bit and that may be a section of code that we should take a new look at, a fresh look at.
I mean, it's still in use. The sort of interesting possibility that, that we're not really capturing, and I don't know that it's worth going after, is, is there's a whole element of commerce now associated with social media platforms. Instagram comes instantly to mind. There are people who make substantial amounts of money with Instagram posts of various sorts. Not at all clear to me whether that would fit in or whether we want to capture it, but you definitely answered my question. Thank you.
I, I've got just a little bit to add to that. One of the things that I've started looking into a little bit is, is the potential of revenue from intellectual property that comes from branding, et cetera. And something I've, I've heard about from other cities, I've reached out a little bit on this with no, something I've just recently started looking at. So there may be something in that to, to recognize there, there may be some, some benefit to the city in, in, in looking at that path a little bit. I just want to support that idea as it ties in. Mr. Hardy, is that satisfy where you are on that?
Yes, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and, and please, council members, I can't see everybody at the same time. So if you need, if you want to speak and I'm not seeing you, please, please speak up. So with that, I, I will give it, hand it back as we move forward.
Great, thank you very much for all the feedback on that. And so any other, before we wrap up the general city, are there any other line items that council would like to look at further, get answers from, you know, from staff and provide any other feedback?
I'm seeing no hands here.
Okay, so with that, we will move on to planning, which is the next section. And Priya, again, if you can definitely make it larger for my eyes and then focus on the left-hand side. And I do want to point out, there is a typo in here, which is, is definitely a difference. So it's line item 33. And I believe Priya and Mandy got this corrected on this item. So line item 33 had a temporary use permit for special events as $1,700 in the proposed fee. The proposed fee is actually 500. So I wanted to make everybody aware of that. But for the planning department, is there any other, is there any particular line items that you had questions on or any feedback for staff or for the consultant?
Mr. Hardy?
Yes, I have. And I, I have some questions here that, that probably apply to various items throughout the fee study, but I'll bring them up here. I'm looking at well, the first three items, appeals minor, appeals major and administrative determination. These are all items which I'm pretty sure come with a wide range of possibilities in terms of the level of effort and resulting cost. And I'm not sure how frequent they are. So it would be very interesting to me to know how many examples were available to the consultant to do the analysis and, and how variable they are. Is this, you know, for example, under appeals minor, we have a full cost at almost $2,000, very close to $2,000, you know, is that reflect a tight range among the examples from 1,800 to 2,200? Or is it from 500 to 2,500? That's, that's the kind of thing I'd like to understand because it, it I think it's worth considering the extent to which with any of these fees we are subsidizing some at the expense of others.
Thanks, Lester. I had a similar comment elsewhere.
So I'm, I'm just picking those as examples really for that question. There may be better examples of things that we don't do very often, that could have a wide range of cost, but perhaps, well, subdivisions, item 26, we almost never do subdivisions in St. Helena. Entire decades have gone by without subdivisions being processed. So again, I'm wondering how many examples there are and if there's more than one, how variable they are.
Same with specific plans.
Yeah, I'll speak up a little bit on this, like April. It is very common for cities to have a number of fees in their schedule that they have not done it in years or may not need to do in the near future either. But what you need to have is a reasonable estimate of cost. And so you do go, kind of goes, so staff goes through the motion of estimating how much cost it takes, what's involved. And so you cut, you do a cost estimate on these type of applications. So it's, it's kind of one of those things, right? Where how do you know what it costs until you have to do one regularly? So there's quite a few of these where staff is very familiar with what the cost is involved. And other ones where there is a measure of, you have to consider what's a large project versus a small project, a small appeal versus a large appeal, right? So it's kind of a combination of experience as well as estimating. And as it's done up and down California, that is the standard practice and that is the general rule on how you go about these kind of time estimates.
And I'm also going to ask Aaron Heacock to jump in because Aaron was the staff member that worked with Wildon in determining what, what, how much that time is actually involved in each of these areas.
Yeah, well, I, Lester, to your comment about going back to the appeals, our appeal application form, actually, there's, there's no difference between minor and major. I think that's a relic of the previous fee structure that we had. So really, we only have one appeal. It's the $1,000. So there is no minor and no major. Most of the, you know, we probably do one to three appeals a year. Um, most of the, uh, you know, we probably do one to three appeals a year. Um, I would say in my experience, the, you know, the last seven years. As far as the administrative determinations concerned, very infrequent. Um, that's essentially someone coming and asking, uh, the planning director to make an official, you know, uh, determination, um, based on something in the code that, that isn't clear in, in their mind. Um, I think we've probably done three in the past six and a half years, two or three. So again, very infrequent, but to clarify the appeal, we, we have one appeal.
Uh, right. Well, that's a really good example, I think, um, of an item for which I would expect a significant range. Uh, as an example, um, I'm imagining that the appeal of the Behringer use permit mod took up a lot more staff time than, say, uh, the most recent appeal of a residential design review, uh, determination. And I'm just trying to get a sense of how big a range we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, as you pointed out, it, it, it could be astronomical. I mean, somebody could appeal, uh, a sign permit, you know, which would be, you know, fairly minimal staff time. And then somebody could appeal, uh, you know, a giant, you know, subdivision that would...
Maybe, maybe I can ask a better question then. Uh, uh, Mr. Heacock, um, in providing information to the consultant for the fee study, were you providing information that reflected a time and effort sort of in aggregate for all of the appeals that you had at hand?
That's correct. Essentially an average.
So, so we end up with an average, but was that information generated in a way that, you know, made a record of the range? Or am I, am I looking for an answer to a question that, that, uh, wasn't asked, uh, in the process?
Yeah, um, no, no record. It was, um, just looking at it and, you know, going off what our experience is in time. There's, there's no, uh, backup data. So I didn't go back and look up every appeal and try and guess how much staff time was devoted to each individual appeal at that specific time. Um, it, it was just a general, uh, best, best guess average.
Okay, thank you. So, so my comment, then, uh, that being the case is for, and it's just something I'm throwing out for, for discussion at whatever point this becomes appropriate. And I don't mean right now, but it seems to me that for those kinds of things for which there's likely to be a really big range, uh, like, um, appeals, uh, and I'm sure there are other examples, uh, it may make sense to do a full cost-based recovery because that could, uh, be something that benefits both those people who have really simple appeals, uh, and, and, and then only increases, uh, the cost to those who have, uh, complex and time-consuming appeals. It's, it's just a thought I'm throwing out for, uh, staff and council, uh, consideration as we go forward.
One suggestion I could also make is that in some of the other cities, we noticed that they did it based on hourly rate with a deposit. So you could collect a deposit upfront and then just bill based on, um, the hourly rate against the deposit.
Right. That's, 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 uh, something like, uh, full recovery program, but it's, it's, uh, time and expense billing. And, and you pay the deposit upfront and then you go on from there. Uh, that is the case with most, but not all, uh, planning department applications in Napa County as an example. I'm most familiar with it there. Uh, but I'm sure we would see it elsewhere.
So that's, that's something, Mr. Heacock, that, that, and, and, and Mandy, that you've seen and maybe we can look at?
Yeah, I mean, without a doubt. I mean, I, I, I think that same thing, you know, applies to use permits. We could have a very simple use permit for a fairly benign store, um, in the central business district where it adds, you know, we could have a very large use permit for something like, uh, a new hotel. So two very different things that require, uh, very different amounts of staff time.
So a graduated approach. Uh, any council, other council thoughts on that? I'm seeing Mr. Chateau.
All right. I had a, a different thought, but that sounds good to me. I think that that sounds reasonable. I like that idea because my thought that I wanted to add was I was looking at this with the lens of how can we help attract businesses to Main Street? Is there anything we can do knowing that the two thousand and eighteen downtown market retail analysis identified an unfriendly business attitude or environment and that that was something to work on and things have only gotten harder with COVID? So when I was looking through these, just one thing that popped out was the sign fee, a thousand dollars. And I wondered if that was something that we would want to get rid of or reduce or somehow look at differently. And if there aren't, that was one idea that I had that stood out. That's line thirty-one. And is, is there anything else that I missed that would make sense that this would be a good opportunity where we could show, um, that we want to be encouraging to businesses to come to our Main Street and especially be promoting small businesses?
Thank you, Councilmember Chateau. I can comment on that a little bit as well. I mean, I think the, the number one thing that we could do would be to make the, the list of permitted uses through the comprehensive zoning code update more broad, thereby requiring less businesses to actually get a use permit, make them permitted by right. It would take that off the table. Um, as far as the sign permit goes, so the, the thousand dollar sign permit is one that actually, that's a planning commission sign permit. Um, that is nowhere near what, uh, would be required to actually recover full cost for a sign permit going to planning commission. We do have an administrative sign permit. It is in here somewhere. I'm not sure what line item it is. It's, it's listed as a new fee, I believe. Um, and that there, there it is. It's line item forty. Um, and that's the administrative, that is something that can be approved by staff, and that's a five hundred dollar fee. Um, so that's potentially one we, that the council could look at to, to maybe reduce a little bit. But the, the sign fee that, for a, a sign permit that goes to planning commission, um, yeah, I don't, I don't think thousand dollars is, is a recovering cost, but...
And I'll jump in. I just want to echo what Aaron said. I think there's incredible opportunity to, um, remove a lot of these, um, businesses that are, that have conditional uses tied to them, particularly in the downtown, and make those permitted uses because that's, that's going to, A, free up, you know, the, the time for them to move forward and, and take away that cost burden as well. So we are definitely, uh, focusing, uh, very closely on those. And, uh, and so what I would anticipate in two years is that we would probably see, um, a, a pretty significant, uh, uh, downturn in the number of, uh, applications for use permits as it relates to like new businesses having to open downtown.
So that's the zoning code update process that you were...
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. And I think that clarification is, is, is good to know that we're kind of multi-tracking here. So thank you. Any other council comments on this section, uh, or are we ready to move on? I'm looking, and I'm not seeing any other council comments, so we can move forward here.
Great, thank you. So just a really quick recap. I know Maya and both Maya and Eric who mentioned the zoning code update is actually going to be pretty much eliminated in some of these fees for just the, you know, more of the downtown business area. And then also what we'll do is we'll take a second look at anything that there might be a wide variety of time and we will, we can convert that over to more of a deposit based on time and materials. So I, I believe that's the direction that we have got from council with a nod of the head on that. Okay. So the next one we are going to move over to is the building department. And we do have Phil, uh, with us tonight. He is our chief building official. So he does deal with these fees a lot, um, on a day in and day out basis. And so if you look at the comparisons with the other cities, uh, this category doesn't actually have a lot of comparison. So you'll see a lot of the NAs across the board, um, because a lot of our ci- city fees are based off of the flat fee or off of square footage as opposed to actually working off of valuation. And there are merits in both of them, um, but I know when Phil was working with a consultant, he definitely had a recommendation to be able to do it off the square footage. So I'd love to open it up to city council for any particular line items they have questions on, or if they have any questions of our building official in this area. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Uh, please, uh, speak up, uh, uh, if you have some thoughts on this section.
Just April, could you move it over a little bit so we could see the suggested fee? Thank you.
Mr., and we have Mr. Henry on the line. Is that, yeah, I'm seeing Phil, Philip?
Yeah, I'm here.
And, and in your, in your review of this, does this feel like we're in a, a good, consistent place on what we're looking at, uh, moving forward here?
I, I think so. Um, yeah, some of the fees we're recommending staying, uh, the same as what we've been, uh, charging for. And then there's some increase on some others. Um, but we, we kind of thoroughly reviewed it, um, a few months back, and, and that's our recommendation.
Okay. You know what? Just wanting to make sure that, you know, we hear from, uh, folks both in business and residential, um, and just wanting to make sure that they can get, to keep their projects moving forward. So wanting to make sure that our, our fees, you know, while we are, uh, recovering costs, also making sure that they're not prohibitive either on the business or the residential side, just so folks feel like, you know, we've got a city that, that wants to work with our, our community. And so, uh, if you're feeling like we're in that zone, uh, it's good to get your take on it.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Hardy?
Uh, yes. Uh, Mr. Henry, I'm, I'm, I heard something and I, I, I was probably distracted actually looking at, at the, uh, report itself. So I'm not sure I understood the comment about, uh, using square footage. Uh, is that, uh, square footage versus valuation? And, and please explain.
Yeah, that's correct. So, um, some cities charge fees based on valuation. So if you come in and say your project is, um, you know, uh, costing a hundred thousand dollars, your permit fee is based off of that hundred thousand dollars. We don't do that here. We use square footage. So if you come in and remodel five hundred square foot of an existing home, for example, um, we charge you based on the five hundred square feet. So it could be a million dollars to remodel that or a hundred thousand dollars. One, one of the benefits I see in just charging the per square foot is we don't have people that are trying to, um, uh, you know, put down a lower cost. So you have that occasionally. Somebody will come in and say they're doing a remodel project and they're saying the valuation's ten thousand dollars, when you know that, um, there's no way you could do it for that cheap. And so, um, so we don't have to fight that battle. Um, I, I know in another jurisdiction I worked in, we would then have to ask them for a copy of their contract and things like that to, it, to ensure that the, um, building permit fees were, um, in line with what the actual cost was. Here it's just a straight square footage. Um, so for us, it, it kind of takes that whole issue away. It's five hundred square feet and that's what our fees are based on, um, as an example, rather than a valuation.
Understood. And that makes sense to me. It, it, it does then, you know, generate another question, uh, related to some, uh, earlier moment of presentation. Uh, what do you see in your work, a big range of time and effort, uh, you know, per square foot according to the nature of the project? Or are things pretty much the same whether, uh, you're looking at, uh, a high-end, uh, uh, new home or, uh, a simple, uh, remodel of, uh, uh, something very modest?
Yeah, so that, it, it doesn't really change. So for example, if somebody's just, you know, buying a fifty-dollar, uh, faucet and installing it in a bathroom compared to if someone bought a gold-plated faucet, the, the inspection process really doesn't change. The valuation of the type of faucet they're putting in would substantially change. But, um, for us, you know, the, the, uh, the basic function of inspections and how we do plan review would not change at all. So, um, that's, that's another point of valuation. And out here, I will say that the cost is substantially higher on valuation, um, than, say, if you built in the Central Valley of California. And there's a whole lot of reasons for that that go into that. But valuation could really skew what permit fees would be out here if, um, if we went that route.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions on this section from the council? I'm seeing or hearing none. So we will move on.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Phil, for your, for your help and your input. Uh, so the next department is public works. We will scroll to public works and definitely ask us and let us know if you have any feedback on any of these, uh, suggested fees.
Thank you. Council, any thoughts on this section? Maybe I, uh, we can get a description under, uh, items fifteen and sixteen. Um, what is a, a minor encroachment permit and what is a, a major encroachment permit?
All right. Um, thank you. Um, the encroachment permit minor is for, um, something that, that touches the city, the city, um, sidewalks such as, you know, a backflow preventer, um, RP device going on the upside of a city meter that touches our services, but it's not actually hitting the public right of way. Whereas if you're actually, um, just, um, disrupting a sidewalk or city street with trenching or replacing sidewalk or pavement, um, it's an encroachment permit major.
Okay. The reason I ask is that's the, that's the one item where I get a lot of complaints by contractors saying that the city is, uh, I, I won't use the words they use, but charging too much. I'll just put it that way. Replacing a small section of sidewalk.
Minor permits, yeah, but, but minor permit is sometimes you have a contractor driving up on a sidewalk. They're parking, they're blocking a parking lane and they're blocking the city sidewalk. Um, so we need to have some kind of, of coverage and liability there. Um, so they have provided ample like traffic control or, and/or assistance with those, um, with that site address. I, I can't give a good example there, whether it's residential or if someone has scaffolding set up on Main Street downtown. Um, they're, they're not cutting into the sidewalk or cutting into the, the city street, but they are affecting the public right of way and need our eyes on, on sight with it.
If I can, uh, add a thought here, I, I suspect that, uh, you know, given what the fees are, that the complaints aren't about the cost of the fee for the application. It's rather about the cost of compliance, uh, with everything you have to do in order to get an encroachment permit. Um, uh, I know, uh,
That is true.
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, I don't know that helps, but that was my thought.
Okay. On the encroachment, uh, fee, are there any other thoughts or questions before we, you know, move forward?
I guess one, one, uh, add-on to Councilmember Chateau's comments, um, I'm wondering if we could give some thought to having, um, lower fees during sort of pandemic-related or other emergency situations, uh, certain areas that maybe, uh, create incentives to, to attract businesses and then ramp those up later, you know, staggered, looking at certain fees and go, okay, this is one where we, we won't increase now, but we could increase it in two years or, or three years from now and then start from there. Um, you know, set, set the fee now, but don't impose it just yet. In certain areas that we think will, uh, be of assistance... in certain areas that we think will be of assistance to new businesses.
Paul, it's Eric. I, I like that thought a lot. I was, I was thinking, one of the things I was struggling with here was we're, we're just heading into our reprioritization over the next month or two and our new budget. And I was curious. I view this in part, obviously it needs to be reviewed and, and updated every, every five years or so. But there's an opportunity to try to do that right now and leverage this based on whatever our, our top priorities are coming out of our planning. Presumably part of that priority is going to be something like a business recovery program. And so I think our, our fee structure here would map to that sort of overall city objective. And maybe there's a way we can sort of, you know, again, as we're doing the zoning, as we're looking at this, as we're doing our prioritization over the next month or two, we keep all those parallel tracks in mind. So the fees that we're putting in place today, maybe we just say, hey, our business recovery plan calls for something very aggressive over the next two to five years. And let's make a note in our fee schedule that we fully intend to adjust certain fees back up to whatever a normal rate is or whatever the suggested rate is at some point down the road.
Eric, I like the way that you use the word map or mapping. I think that looking at these parallel tracks and, you know, getting some sort of approach that we're, we're mapping a way forward with this, I think is a good way to, to think of it.
Thanks, Jeff. One, one other comment I had is there's, there's a lot of fees here and a lot of them are, are stepping up a bit. Some of them are, are suggested to step up quite dramatically. I don't have a very good sense at all of the net effect that has on our revenue. And some fees are actually coming down and it would be good to understand, you know, what, what was our use of each of these? How many times do we collect these 500 bucks or 200 bucks over the past two years? And if you plug that data back in, what does your revenue generation look like based on the suggested fee schedule or this, yeah, your suggested fees? So anyway, I don't know if there's a way to do that, April, presumably. I'm, I know you're a miracle worker and you can do it. I know you can, but I'm just thinking, I'm hoping you guys are glancing over and keeping a side tally as you're, you're going through here.
I would not be that much of a miracle worker based off of our current system that we have. In the staff report, there was a graph that shows by category, by basically each of these departments, historically, how much we've collected by entire category. Unfortunately, when it goes into the accounting system, a lot of fees also, also, let's say, the building department go in one particular line item, but that might be 10 different fees. And on the other side, in our building and planning department, we have a software called Tracket. And so that's where it would be differentiated. But then over the years, they've had several renditions of how they actually recorded on that system. So the systems that we have as of right now, there's no way that we could do that. Not to say, I know Maya has been working, Maya and Priya have both been looking at some other softwares for the building and planning department that might allow us to do it. But with what we have right now, it does not give us the capabilities. It just allows us to compare it by total operational area, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it sure does. Thank, thank you.
I wish I had that magic wand.
That'd be awesome.
Well, I think just, just putting the thought out there, I think begins to help us. It plants a seed for maybe a way to, 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 to map this. I did have a question before we moved on from this section on the outside fire service agreement fee. So is that a one-time fee for somebody outside of the city limits to tie into our fire service?
Yes, this is a one-time application fee. We don't get very many of these, but it's an application fee. If we exhaust the funds, you're supposed to, there's some time tied into it. The city attorney and city engineers' time and staff are reviewing it. But if they go over that, we'll need more money because sometimes there's a lot of back and forth to the attorneys. But it's a one-time fee and then they have to follow the rate structure that's set in the city's rate study or adopted rate plan for paying their, their fire service meter to their site.
And so on a yearly basis, folks who have used the fire services outside of city limits, we have some arrangements with the county in terms of how we're compensated for, for that use. Is that correct?
This is just a, a service fee for an application to move forward with the fire service agreement that comes to city council for approval.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Can I take one step back to the plan check fee schedules? The, the current fee that's based there, it sounded like Mr. Henry was saying that's, it's based on square footage or per the tiers that he has set up. Where, where does the actual fee come from? Is that an outside vendor who's handling our plan check work? And that's, that's simply a vendor fee that, that we get per square foot? Is that our starting point? Or are we putting hours into something there or how, how do we get that?
If Priya, if you can go up, we're going to be going back to the building department. I believe it's building department. If you see the line item, Eric, just let us know.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm thinking it's, you know, it's under construction. So somewhere before you're going to get to public works.
I don't see.
Looks like line 100 under hourly rates at the bottom of.
Eric, are you referring to the supplemental plan check fee?
Maybe, maybe that's what it is. This, this thing, April, can you see this?
I. Oh, okay. I believe it's right below where it says building permit fees, construction type at the very top.
Right.
Okay. I will let Phil speak to that. I think, I believe Phil's still.
Are you there? Okay, go ahead, Phil.
I'm still here. Hopefully you can hear me. I don't know how good my cell service is here. But yeah, so the plan check fees, that covers staff's time. And when I say staff, it is building department staff. It's planning department staff to look at, at a plan set and also public works as well. And so as far as building, we handle about 90% of the plan check in-house. But we do occasionally use a consultant. If we have a tremendous amount of activity or we get a very large project where it's just too much for our staff to handle it, we'll send it out. So it, it can be both consultants and our staff, but we're trying to cover our costs for the plan check. And it is spread out among several departments. And sometimes even fire department will look at a plan set to evaluate if there's any special needs for the fire department.
Right, or, or sewer hookups or anything.
Yes.
So, so, so your base fee by square foot, that's just, you, you guys are making estimates of what it might cost to look at 400 square feet versus 1,000 square feet. How much time?
Yeah, that's correct. So it, it depends. Yeah.
Yeah, thank, thank you. That's all. I was just looking for that clarity.
Okay.
So I'm going to jump in for a moment here, just looking at the time. We're looking at 5:20 right now. We have a six o'clock regular meeting. My thought is to take the next 25 minutes here till about quarter to six to, to keep going. And then we'll take a break at 5:45 just to let everybody get reset for the council meeting. So if, and then, then if we want to go through what we've got left and if we have some extra work that needs to be done, perhaps we can assign a council member or two to work with staff and the consultant to clarify things as we go before it comes back to the council. That's my thought at this point. Any objection to that?
We also want to be sure that we provide time for public comment, Mayor.
Okay, great. So shall we work on this for another 10, 10 minutes or so? And then we'll open it up for public comment. Thank you, Mr. Presswisch.
Great. So any other feedback or comments on public works department? Okay, just as a quick synopsis, I, from what I was hearing for the public works department fees, as well as some of the other fees is potentially, you know, to make sure that any of those fee structures do line up with the city council goals, which could include economic, economic recovery as well as the potential, maybe developing some type of or modifying the current fee structure to allow for getting out of this pandemic, maybe a hold or a freeze on certain fees and then at a later point raising them if I, if I have a nod of, if I was interpreting that correctly. Okay, so next we'll move on to parks and recreation fees. And we do have our Parks and Recreation Director, Andre Pitchley, here to answer any questions. These fees did go to, we did a, similar to this, we did a special workshop with the Parks and Rec Commission. So we had one workshop, received feedback from them. We did adjust some of the fees based off of that initial feedback. We brought this fee scheduled back to the Parks and Rec Commission. It was earlier this month and this, these are the fees that they have endorsed for us to be able to recommend to city council. So definitely, again, any line items that you have any questions on, we are here to answer any questions and receive any feedback. And I, I see Anna with her hand up.
I do. I have some notes on this one. Down at the, let's see, I had, oh, this is a different graph. So this is going to be on the tennis courts fee. What stood up, stood out to me was that $5 for renting the court and the dollar fee for doing the lights. That to me seemed like not necessary in terms of it being just as much money to administer it and just having that be something that might deter families and people from using the tennis courts. I think of it like the skate park or fields. It's so important for the health of people to get out and be active. And that seemed so minor. I would like to hear more about that. And of course, my thinking without hearing the thoughts was, was wondering if we could get rid of that. The same thing, there was a $40 fee per hour for a tennis instructor. And I think having somebody come up from up valley to do these lessons is increasingly challenging. And it's a gift to be able to keep those tennis lessons and important for our community affordable. So that's another thing that I wanted to look at to see if there was support to not have that, not charge these instructors, have them charge. Because if we charge them $40 and they're, they're going to just pass that on to everybody giving the lesson. And pretty soon it's just makes it not affordable for a lot of people.
I think that's a, in my, my thought is that's a, an excellent point. But I, I've also seen in other cities where, you know, somebody has a commercial operation using a public facility and it, and there can be competing commercial operations. I'm wondering if there's a way to look at a fee that makes it very reasonable, but also brings in some, some revenue for the city since it is a commercial operation. But I do recognize, as you're saying, Anna, that we want to keep this as affordable as we can for everybody. So, so is there a way to sort of balance that?
And, and what I was thinking is, you know, has it been a problem? For me, I see there's lots of space in the courts. There's two people pretty much that are giving lessons to groups of kids often. And if it's not a problem, then do we need to solve for that yet is my question.
Any thoughts from the rest of the council on that?
Well, you know, this has been vetted by the Parks and Recreation Commission. So I'd hate to make any unilateral changes without asking them for, maybe we should take note of some of these items and, and have them maybe do a short report as to how they got to, what their logic was and how they got to approving these fees. It seems, I, I, I think we should look at it, but I also would like to respect the process of, you know, this body that weighed in on these fees and seemed to be okay with them. So.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Could I provide some background on these three fees that you're talking about?
Yes, please.
The $5 per hour for the courts, our courts are, are, are open. We don't, you know, it's really a first come, first served basis, but we don't have, we don't provide a service where if you want to guarantee that you're going to be able to play on a court from 11 to 12, that there's a way to, to reserve that. And that's all it is, is it's just a means for somebody to say, you know what? I really want to know that I can play between 11 and 12. So I'll, I'll, I'll take advantage of the service, pay the $5 so that I know it's going to be posted out at the tennis courts that I have court for from 11 to 12. And that's all it is. Will it get utilized? I don't think it'll get utilized a whole lot, but it's, it's, we've had requests from individuals and from groups if they could reserve the courts. And it's just not a service we offer. As far as the lights right now, there is no fee for the lights. We've, when we've talked about making improvements to the lighting system out at Crane Park on tennis courts, it was to introduce a means by which people could have the ability to turn on and off the lights and that there would be a nominal fee to go along with that. That's, that's pretty much standard in the industry. You, you'll find places where they've either got some sort of coin or, or token gadget device that allows people to turn the lights on and then it's set on a timer that expires after 55 minutes or an hour. And, and we might be able to take advantage of using some technology so people could use a smartphone, smartphone to do that. The other issue is that there are times people don't turn the lights off, turn the lights off after an hour. They'll leave the lights on for an hour and a half, maybe two. Sometimes they do it as a means to let other people who show up have the ability to use the courts, use the lights on the courts because those, those lights right now, the way they're set up, when they turn off, it takes about eight minutes for those lights to warm back up to, and, and be at full, full power for the next match. We've heard some people do that. Other people leave them on as like additional lighting for either safety and security or just to not have them be in this one little court lit up with everything else dark around it. So the thought is that it would also be a way of, of encouraging people to be better stewards of using the lights if there was a nominal fee. And then the, the last one was the, was the private, the private lessons. Right now, if you want to teach out at Crane Park and do lessons, we like to have that person join our department as an independent contractor. And so when we do that, we end up in a percentage split of the fee that comes in. So that the, the instructor sets the fee and then we take 30% for administrative. That, that also goes towards court maintenance and then they get 70% of their fee. So they can set their fee, whatever it is they want in order to cover what they need. Anybody who comes in to teach that doesn't have an agreement with it can set any fee they want and isn't paying to use the courts. In the ordinance right now, 2.56, it talks about the fact that parks cannot be used for commercial use. So this would be one way of allowing somebody, if they're not going to be an independent contractor, to at least rent the courts from us and then the city isn't giving away use of a facility for free. Does that help?
That, that does really help. So you're saying what I heard is the light system isn't what is there now currently, which I was seeing, there's no way, I didn't see any way to charge for this dollar. You're talking future light system.
Yes.
Don't have yet. Okay.
Correct.
Makes sense to me, especially if you can have it be tied to a smartphone, knowing most people don't have coins.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping that's the case. We do know that there are, I do know of other organizations that have the ability to turn the lights on and off remotely.
And then also, so that with the $40 per hour, right now there's a system where we have independent contractors where they wouldn't be charged the $40 per hour.
Correct.
They're independent contractors. This is anybody that is not.
Correct. Anybody who is not, who, who wants to make money teaching tennis on city courts without the city. I mean, the other thing too is these people show up, they're going to run their lessons, but there's no liability. I mean, the other thing too is these people show up, they're going to run their lessons, but there's no liability coverage. We, and that would be another thing that we would need to do is make sure that these people are providing the city with that adequate coverage.
Thank you. That is a great clarification. That helps. And that makes sense to me.
So as we. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, would it help if for line item, I believe it's 104, where it says tennis court for non-commercial use? Would it be more clear if we updated that to say tennis court uh, reservation? So that way it doesn't give the appearance, because I agree, it does give the appearance of, oh, if I want to use the court, I have to pay. So maybe we just update that to tennis court reservation.
I think that's a good clarification.
Could we add tennis court for reservation by private individual?
Yep. I mean, I think that, 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 anything you need to clarify it.
Yeah, because then it would work the same as the Crane Park, all the park rentals. Like if you want to actually reserve it for your own private use, we do everything through a system we already have in place.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So in the, and we're looking at the time now, what I'm thinking is um, if we have a couple of council members who might be interested in working with staff and the consultant to just sort of vet through some of the things we've talked about, sort of keep this on track, I want to open it to public comment now. But if, if a couple of council members think about if they would want to participate in sort of just getting this to the next step as it would come back to the council. But I'm going to, at this point, open it to public comment and I will look to Cindy to let us know if there is any public comment at this point.
I'm looking, Mr. Mayor, and I do not see a hand raise.
Okay, great. Well, I'll bring it back now to the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think I like your idea that maybe there would be some uh, more targeted thought by a couple of council members on some of the items. I do think that that would be premature at this point. My recommendation would be if we are not able to finish this presentation tonight, to have it continued and come back and finish the rest. Then we have a, a sort of a working list of all the different issues that need to be further fine tuned. Otherwise, you're going to have a subcommittee that's not really, doesn't have the benefit of our comments and the public's comments because we're not done. I would finish first and then do the subcommittee.
Okay, I think that that sounds excellent. So if we're okay looking at scheduling a second meeting here, well, where we'll finish going through the material, whatever we don't get to in the next uh, 10 minutes or so, then uh, I think that sounds like an excellent way to go forward.
With all due deference to the, to the city manager, he may have a different idea, but that's my idea.
Well, we had discussed that, we had discussed, uh, you know, possible ways, and that is certainly one of them. I think that that's a good way to go. So we've got a few minutes left here. We've got about 10 minutes left. So if um, if folks want to, if we want to move to the next section here.
Any other feedback on Parks and Rec before we move on? Okay, so the next fee, the next set of fees that we are going to be reviewing are the police department fees. And I do, and we do have Chief Hartley here with us tonight. They can answer some questions. I'm, I'm looking for him in my squares. There he is. Um, and just as, just so you are aware, both Yountville and American Canyon um, are going through user fee studies right now. And so it's similar to what Tony had mentioned for NAPA. We don't know what, what their fees are going to look like. And so, you know, obviously it's not compared in our, it's not reflected in our comparisons. And then there are certain fees that are more towards the bottom of the chart that are actually dictated by, by code. So some of those fees, we don't have the ability to, to change. It might be a little bit, or that might be the maximum amount that we can charge. So if you have any particular questions on these, Chris Hartley is here to answer any of those questions.
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Chief, could you maybe describe what, what is within the scope of the DUI cost recovery? That's item 27. What, what kind of.
20.
Involved there?
Um, what's involved with the DUI cost recovery is it, it, it's attached to the fine that's levied by the court. It's something that the city can actually recover from a DUI arrest. A DUI arrest, um, you know, eats up a lot of officer time. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I saw that $12,000, up to $12,000. I assume it is a fair amount of officer time. What, do you have a, an idea of what it typically is just on average, or if, you know, what that number would be? I was concerned about $12,000. I, I, it's got to be something other than officer time to get to 12,000, right?
Yeah, I know the, the DUI cost recovery, the $12,000 is something that's thrown out there by the state of California, the judicial committee. Um, and, and that's, that's as high as a municipality can charge. Normal, you know, and it's, the DUI is going to depend on whether, you know, it was a solo vehicle, solo person, all the way up to a fatality.
Okay. Thank you. Any other thoughts from the council here on this section? Not hearing any or seeing any council thoughts here.
Along that lines of the DUI cost recovery, maybe this is more apropos for the fire chief. But assume somebody has a single car collision, they happen to be impaired. That car goes down a ravine and you have to recover the, the vehicle. Do we charge for that? And maybe it's premature, uh, but it, it's on my mind, be under this item. Do we just recover that, Dick? I know we have to probably hire someone to do that, but it seems like there's a lot, a fair amount of staff time involved in, you know, rescuing somebody who's impaired, getting their car back on the roadway or to a, you know, a tow service, that, those kinds of things. Do we have a fee for that?
That's included in the DUI recovery fee, Paul. All the towing, like we had to pull a car out of a ravine. The, the tow company bills that separately. However, we can use the fire department's time and effort from the paramedics to add up, to build up on that DUI cost recovery.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, one, one follow-up, Chief. I was just wondering, or April, I guess. Um, we're subsidizing a, a lot of these fees and I'm wondering if this is uh, an area where we should be subsidizing. Are we, are, are these fees in line with other police departments? Is this typical billing practice, I guess? Or um, you know, I would think this, you know, it's not a tennis court type thing. Somebody's done something wrong, I, I think typically, and so uh, there's a fee that goes along with it. So I was just noticing some of the subsidies are as high as 80 or 90%, and I didn't understand why.
I can uh, speak on that a little bit, Eric. How are you tonight? Um, and the comparisons that you were given, um, American Canyon, Yountville um, have extremely high fees. They went with the, the maximum that the state allows.
I see.
And that was not approved by county council. Um, this is something that was, um, that somebody jumped the gun on. So it's been pulled off the table and it's gone back for review. I hope that answered your question without throwing anybody under the bus.
Thank you.
I, I think I, I see what you're, you're looking at. It, it's the idea that for something like playing tennis, uh, that may be an area where we would want to subsidize on a community benefit. But when somebody uh, does something that is not a community benefit, why, why would we be so inclined? Is, if that, is that what I'm sensing in what you're saying?
Uh, that, that was my general, uh, my general question, yeah.
Okay.
But uh, thank you, Chief.
And that, that may be something that we can uh, talk to staff, talk to the consultant about how to, how to look at balancing something like that aspect.
I suggest that Eric gets on that subcommittee.
That's what happens, Eric. You get volunteered.
You guys see all this gray hair? There's a lot here.
Well, it's, it's good to get into this detail here. I mean, I think that this is an opportunity, if, if this has not come around for a while, for us to really kind of look at it. So I'm glad we're doing it.
This is nothing, Eric. Just imagine what happens if you miss a meeting.
Okay, we've got a few more minutes here. Do we want to get through uh, one more bit here?
Yeah, absolutely. So just to recap for the police department, this is particular, particular, this is one area where city council might want to look at less of, less of a subsidy. So the final area is the fire department. So if we can look at the fire department fees, there are 10 of them. So this one should go pretty quick.
Can I ask the fire chief, uh, you know, in looking at this, does this feel comfortable to you where we're at with these suggestions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, everything is um, in line and the, everything, everything was um, was done from, you know, different, different cities and, and being in there. And it, it's all in there. And if you go to the, the very bottom, you'll see the alarm system response. That's, you know, it's a false alarm. We have just chronic alarm soundings. And if you don't, you know, they're not going to fix it unless you do something like this. So on, they get three alarms in a calendar year on the house. On the fourth alarm, it's a hundred bucks, fifth alarm, 250, and then 500. Well, let me tell you, that, that fourth alarm, when they get that a hundred dollars, they fix the alarm or they stop burning the bacon, which is, is, is what happens. But nothing will happen unless you have those fees. That's the, one of the, our biggest problems is rolling out, you know, you know, one to three engines for somebody that just chronically sets off the alarm.
And we have a gray system so that it, that it, it has to be a chronic situation before it starts really accruing.
Right, calendar and then it resets.
Okay.
Chief, what is the, uh, what is the, the position of the department? And what is the sort of the state of, of where the cities are going in California with respect to having to charge for medical responses?
Oh, we're.
By fire, by fire, by fire personnel as opposed to ambulance themselves.
Right, yeah, that's a, that's, we're not, we never transported or had a ambulance service. So once you give it up, uh, you lost it. You can't get it back again. Napa City still has paramedics that ride in the ambulance. They jump on, they have two paramedics. It might be the captain or an engineer or firefighter, and they jump on and then they ride to the queen and then the engine follows. So they get that patient care all the way to the hospital. So then there's different fees you can charge for that. Amcan is seeking something similar to that, I heard. But we're, we're not even a BLS house. We're, we're a first responder, which is the lowest, then basic life supporter EMTs. And then paramedic is advanced life support ALS. So we're still at, because we're a mixed bag. You either have to be all EMTs to be BLS. And if you don't have all the EMTs guaranteed, then you are a, a first responder.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions here on the fire department section? Man, I'm seeing none. So Director Miss, does that take us where we need to be this evening?
That does. And I, what I just want to say, I appreciate all of the feedback tonight. This has been great. I know it's a very long and tedious process. And I do want to definitely say a huge thank you to Mandy Kellogg, who oversaw this, you know, this project. It was a lot of work, a lot of hours working with um, the consultants in the department. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all of that. So the next steps from here is, I believe since we got through all of the fees, is to establish a subcommittee or to, one or two council members to, to work with us. So Mayor, if you'd like to take the lead on helping us get two council members, one to two council members designated, that would be great.
Well, first I'll.
Does it?
Are you, are you, Eric, are you, are you open to doing this? I think your attention to detail would be a real benefit here.
Sure, I'm, 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 I'd be happy to.
Great, thank you. Are, do we have any others? Paul, thank you. Okay, wonderful. And so also I just want to ask, if one of the other council members has something that they want to re, return back to, something they see, can they send that into the, uh, to, to, uh, to the city to have them to get?
Yeah, I would direct it directly to Mandy. That would be best.
Okay. Great. That, that way, just in case somebody sees something, this will come back up to the council. So there's still an opportunity for somebody from the public or from somebody from the council to, to voice a, a thought on. Okay, are we comfortable now to take a break here before we come back at six, Mr. Presswich? Great, thank you for, to Mandy. Really appreciate it. Thank you for, uh, everybody here um, for putting this together and we'll see you back at six.
Thank you.